I'll make a motion to adopt an A's agenda. Under item eight point zero, other, I want to pull the closed session.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations.
Thank you, Steve. Item four point eight. Recognition of EDA member Dan Butler. Dan Butler, who's served on the city East Bethel Economic Development Authority since February two thousand twelve, submitted his resignation from the EDA effective October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Prior to his appointment to the EDA, Mr. Butler served on the Parks Commission from February two thousand nine through January two thousand twelve. During Mr. Butler's tenure on the EDA, he was instrumental in the development of the Business Recruitment and Retention Program, broadband internet gap analysis report, and the eighty voltage market study. Mr. Butler was also involved in the Sand Hill Crane Service Road Project and TIF Projects for Aggressive Hydraulics and Cedar Creek Senior Living. Mr. Butler was president of the authority from two thousand fourteen through two thousand seventeen. Mr. Butler led the efforts to form an East Bethel Chamber of Commerce and has been the chairperson of the annual Chamber Golf Tournament, an event which has raised and donated thousands of dollars to NACE, the East Bethel Seniors and Booster Day. Mr. Butler is served with distinction in his position, and his leadership, business knowledge, and enthusiastic personality will be missed. We wish Mr. Butler the best in his future endeavors and thank him for his countless contributions to the city and the EDA. Thank you, Dan, if you'd step forward.
I just wanted to say, Jack, you read that just the way I wrote it down. Thank you so much.
Thank you, man. Thank you, man. So I didn't get my glasses because I'm a little used to it. So in appreciation of his thirteen years of dedicated service and commitment to excellence, Mr. Dan Butler, on behalf of the citizens of East Bethel, we thank you for your leadership and your many contributions to our community. And this doesn't say enough about what you've meant to a lot of councilmembers, the business community, our community as a whole. Dan, thank you for your talk. Just thank you very much. I know you're going to make a speech, so use the microphone.
So a friend of mine, a friend of mine who received a recognition, and I told him that this was going to happen tonight. He said, well, what I told them was, at his recognition award ceremony, you can make the check out. The first number can be a one, and then put as many zeros in there as you would like before you deliver the check. So Paul Letchy, thank you so much because I'm sure he's watching this. But anyway, I wanted to thank everybody who got elected. I want to thank everybody who ran. There's a lot, there's a lot of putting your neck out there and taking shots from people from whatever part of the city that happens. However, if you don't put your neck out there, you've got no skin in the game. So I think it's important that we all have skin in the game. Kevin, thank you so much for putting your neck out there and getting skin in the game. And thank you, Brian and Steve. I'm going to be missing you as far as being the mayor, but I still am going to be looking for your pictures of your travel log. Certainly, they're very interesting. Mr. Harrington, thank you so much for helping out on the golf outing. Tim Harrington has been very instrumental in helping raise the over thirty-five thousand dollars that we've donated to local communities with that endeavor. Suzanne, thank you for running for mayor. It's a hard job to even just run for that. Certainly, you know, you realize that at this point. Jack, I'm going to miss your relationship with me, but I'm looking forward to going to another ballgame with you one of these days. So Chris, I don't know you very much, and I think that's a good idea because I had a, I had a friend of mine tell me he was over at the county courthouse and he saw an attorney standing there. He never saw anything like that in his life. The attorney was standing there with his hands in his own pockets. Anyway, thank you all for serving. Mr. Harrington, good luck next year. And then three years or the two, the two, the two years, I'm thinking you were four years, but maybe two is all you need. Thanks again.
All right, on to item B, four B.
Delinquent utility charges. Council's requested to conduct a public hearing for delinquent utility charges. East Bethel Code of Ordinance, Chapter seventy-four, Section seventy-four-one-twenty-six B, provides for the collection of delinquent accounts through property tax assessments. This ordinance provides the opportunity for property owners that are delinquent in payments to the city for utility services to come before the city council to state their objections. This public hearing meets the requirements of the ordinance. The public hearing must be conducted before the final certification of delinquent amounts as forwarded to the county for collection with property taxes. Council set this date as the public hearing for individuals wishing to object to the delinquent charges being collected through the assessment process. All affected property owners were notified via U.S. mail and were instructed to contact staff if they intended to speak before the city council. No affected property owners have contacted staff as of this time. The final list of properties with delinquent charges must be provided to the county auditor no later than November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Staff request that council conduct a public hearing for delinquent utility charges for collection on the two thousand twenty-three property taxes. At the conclusion of the hearing, if there is no evidence or statements that support a modification of the assessment list, council's request to approve resolution two thousand twenty-two dash seventy-four as a final certification for delinquent utility charges for collection with two thousand twenty-three property taxes.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing for the delinquent utility charges for collection on the two thousand twenty-three property taxes. If there's anyone here tonight interested in talking to council regarding this matter, now is your time to come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion for approval of resolution two thousand twenty-two dash seventy-four as a final certification for the delinquent utility charges for collection with two thousand twenty-three property taxes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's made a second. Discussion.
I have a couple of comments, questions on this. Where do we get the eighteen percent interest charge from? How do we calculate, how do we come up with that? I think it's way too high.
That's an arbitrary figure. It's another one of those things that's trying to do to encourage people to attempt to pay their bills on time, avoid the interest charge.
Okay. My other question is, is there anything we can do to help them? I mean, are, do we, does the city contact people individually, especially the high, excuse me, the higher ones? And are they in trouble? Is there something that can be done to help them?
We do not do that. Typically, those with those high bills generally don't pay their bills during the year and just use this as a means of having their water bills paid. This has been historically true since probably two thousand four, two thousand five, when they were starting to get water bills that have been whispered in Aspen. So, no, we don't do anything. If they reach out to us, we'll be more than happy to talk to them, to see what can be worked out. But we leave it up to them to contact us.
But I believe letters of notification were sent out, weren't they, Jack?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, he said that.
Jack, do you know how many of these, I'll call them repeat customers? We've had issues in the past.
That's my next question.
I would have, I would have to look up the bills individually.
Okay.
But I would say that there's probably a few that are repeaters on that list.
Because what I remember from years past is that's just kind of the modus operandi. Some of these people operate these, wait till it gets assessed their taxes.
Correct. And as you can see, if any of them come in though before the thirtieth, they can still pay their bills before we send this out to the county.
Sure. And they were notified in a letter, I'm sure.
That's correct.
And then they don't have the assessment?
Correct.
Certificate, what is it?
Correct.
Seventy dollar and then the interest? Or they still have the interest?
They still have the interest, but they wouldn't have the assessment cost.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion passes. On to our consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'd like to pull item B, as in boy.
I'd like to pull G, H, I, and J.
And I will pull A, C, D, F. I have comments on G and H, M and N.
Can, can you repeat A?
A, C.
C?
Yes.
Okay.
D as in dog, F as in fox. I'll comment on G and H, M and N as in November.
So what I have left is E, K, and L?
That's what I have.
There you go.
Here, I thought we were going to get through on a consent agenda. Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll check it.
Still need a second, okay. Any further discussion? To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Okay, I'm going to forget who said what, but item A.
Item A. I kind of am curious about the fire department conferences that, was that for more than one person that went? Do you know, Jack?
I would have to check that bill and see.
Okay.
I know there were three firefighters that went, but I don't know how that was billed out.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. And then I'm kind of curious about street maintenance, last page. Gopher State One Call and North County Beaver Control. One's only fourteen dollars, but the other is two hundred. I'm just kind of curious what those are for. It just, it just jumped out at me, so.
Gopher State One Call is the place where you call to get locates for utility lines.
Oh, okay.
And it's, most of the service is paid for by the cable companies, utility companies, and the city assesses two dollars a call, and we have to call and get a utility locate for one of these, and we actually do excavation in the right of way.
And something every day.
The beaver thing is, we normally have beaver issues in several of our ditches, streams, and booster pond. That's a trapper that we pay, and he charges a hundred dollars a beaver. And I've got some interesting pictures in here if you'd like to see what he trapped. He actually caught a sixty-five pound beaver back here out of Booster Pond last year.
Wow.
And they build dams.
Fascinating.
And caused lots of flooding problems. So this is the trapper that we use to catch the beavers.
Thank you. With that, I'm making a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item B.
Item B is a public forum minutes from October twenty-fourth. Change would be, this is on page fifteen of the packet. Second paragraph down where it reads, "Mundell had expressed concerns regarding code enforcement inspections on a property in reference to the July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting." That the subject that we were talking about was property abatement. And so code enforcement inspections on a property should be removed and property abatement put in in place of it.
Any other objections or any objections to that addition? Is that your only change?
That's my only change.
Is there a second?
Well, I'll make a motion to then approve the minute, minutes from the public forum for October twenty-fourth.
Second.
Okay, motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I abstain. I was absent. Item C.
Okay, on page nineteen, it says that this is talking about, well, it says she outlined situation with a city employee that was with the fire department having campaign sign in their trunk. I did not say that was with the fire department. I said a city employee, I think, worked at the fire department building. So, and that was, it's fire station number two, which also has the maintenance building. So I'd like to have that fixed.
How would you like to change that sentence?
City employee, comma, I think, worked at, at the fire department building.
Okay, you want to put that in form of a motion?
I'll make a motion to correct item C on the consent agenda as my wording.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Jack, can we, can we check that tape? Because I know I've watched the tape a couple of times. Can we just check that and verify?
Yeah, we can have, we can have a transcription and then bring it back to see.
So with that in mind, do you want to, you wish to table this? If you want the transcript checked?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
Motion to table, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item C is tabled. Item D, the recording secretary contract.
Oh. Well, I think the secretary contract summarizes a lot more than what I would like, rather than give accurate verbatim information. And I'm wondering if the city has ever thought about using some kind of a software that will transcribe everything that gets said instead, and would probably save the city a lot of money.
We can certainly check into that, or we can direct the contract we have to go to more verbatim minutes at the pleasure of council.
So your question's not so much then, the contract is, is how we do our minutes.
Well, it's that, and I mean, this says they're doing a good job, and I don't think they're doing that great of a job, so.
I think, well, the form of the minutes are what the city has directed. We've, we've had many discussions over the years over how the minutes should be done.
One of the.
There's been verbatim in the past.
Yeah, one of the, one of the issues.
It's been abbreviated in the past.
One of the issues with the verbatim minutes from the discussions I was having in the past was if it's verbatim, it means exactly what was said. And so with corrections of minutes, it would take a while because then, as a councilman, through your words, you would have to review the video to see exactly what was said, what wasn't said, proper punctuation. And then with the verbatim minutes, because they're exactly what you said, if you did not get them exactly right and some sort of reason why the city would have to go to court, those verbatim minutes, even if they are incorrect, could be said, could be used as what it actually was. So with the minutes that we have now and the format that they have, they are much more informative than just summary minutes. It gives you a good, very good idea of what went on in the meeting with information. And if we have a need for, to see exactly what was said, all meetings are videotaped. We can review them at our leisure online or get a DVD from the city, or there's many other ways to review it. That's, that's the background of why we have the minutes that we do right now.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will make a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That item passes. Item F.
Item F is declaring the red Ford Escape as surplus property. It's, what did you say? It's twelve years old?
Correct.
I, as, I think I'm against replacing vehicles just because they're old. So can you explain more about why it needs to be replaced?
Well, in checking with the value of that vehicle on data, it's worth approximately twenty-four hundred dollars. The cost of necessary repairs and maintenance to that vehicle, including tires, needs a new starter, needs a paint job, and possibly there's going to be a new transmission required. It's going to greatly exceed what the value of these. So, and then there's no guarantee that it's going to give us reliable service beyond that.
Procedure to raise your hand, or just jump in?
Yeah.
Just jump in? Can you, do you have an idea what the mileage is?
Hundred and sixty-five thousand miles.
Thanks.
Okay. I know I look at used vehicles all the time, and a two thousand ten is going up for a lot more than, what did you say? Twenty-four hundred dollars? But with that, you did list a lot of expensive repairs. So with that, I will make a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G.
Steve, I'm going to put G, H, I, and J all together. First of all, I'd like to thank Amy Fish for her time in the fire department, Justin Sumatcha for his time on the fire department, and Emma Irkman for her time. And then I'd like to welcome Rachel Miller and Lindsay Zanonowski. Welcome to East Bethel Fire Department, and thanks for volunteering. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve G, H, I, and J.
I'll second. And I will mirror Tim's comments. Thank you, everyone, for your service, for what you do for the city, for the volunteer hours. Even if you do get paid, it's usually marginal, and everyone here, everyone in the fire department contributes, so thank you.
Okay.
I agree.
Motion made second. Discussion, go ahead.
I agree. I want to thank Amy and Justin and Emma, and welcome the new ones. That's all.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Item M.
Item M is the resignation of Stephanie Hanson, our Community Development Director. I am so sorry to see her go. She has been such an asset to this city. She's amazing, she's frank, she's honest. I, she's just been so helpful to so many people, and I am going to miss her. And I know, I think the whole city's going to miss her. So with that, sad farewell to you, Stephanie. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item M with the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
And I mirror those comments, and we're losing a person with a lot of knowledge, not just in her field of study, but with the history of the city and the direction for it to go.
Yeah, I too, I'll thank Stephanie. She's, she's done an outstanding job while she's here, and I want to welcome, or say good luck where she's going. I think she's going to Ramsey, so.
This is the only person I've hired twice. Steph would be missed. Okay, to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. And our last item on consent agenda, item N.
So item N has, is a Highway sixty-five project support letter, and it's mostly talking about repairs, modification from eighty-first, eighty-first to bunker, but it also talks about the light on Viking and sixty-five. And I'm just wondering if there's any plans for that, because we're, we're supposed to be approving it and welcoming it and endorsing it, but I'd like to know before I endorse something, what the plans are going to be for that intersection, that's what they're going to do.
Well, what they're doing, and they haven't finalized exactly or released that totally on what the new design's going to be, but it's going to be designs to increase safety and improve traffic flow in the point of highest congestion on Highway sixty-five that we experienced in getting to Highway ten or Interstate thirty-five. This has been the subject that's been discussed at our trunk Highway sixty-five corridor coalition meetings for the past seven or eight years, and it has been identified as the first step in relieving the congestion on Highway sixty-five. As we go to the point where the biggest problem is the pinch points. Once some of these projects are done, and they're going to take a long time, and that will free Mendon up with some resources and money then to address these intersections further north, particular Crosstown, Constance, Viking Boulevard.
I, I had the same thought, too. It's like we're approving a design, but actually, if you read the letter, it's not, it's, they're asking for support of the momentum of keeping, working together to get the funding for it, so they're.
I believe this is.
To get the funding, it's better to have all the communities in support to get funding.
And this, for this particular funding, Jack helped me out here, it is for, is a super grant from the federal that is.
Yeah, it's what's called Corridors of Commerce program.
Yep, and how much are they applying for?
Ninety million dollars.
So that would make a dent in improving.
It's a fraction of the cost, but yeah.
Yeah, make a large dent.
I, I understand that, and I approve that, and I approve that whole, that project, but they're talking about three important intersections, Constance, Crosstown, and Viking. And I'm just wondering if those of you on that Highway sixty-five coalition, if they have shown some kind of a overall, what it's going to look like when it's all done, and what are the changes going to be on Viking and Constance and Crosstown.
Not, well, that's not part of it, though. I'll, I'll be addressing some of that in my report at the end of the meeting.
All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item N on the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion made second. Any further discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. We have no new, excuse me, no new business department reports. Jack?
We have one item left, Town Hall Meeting, seven G one. And this is to consider approval of the format and agenda for the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two Town Hall Meeting. And the suggested agenda for the meeting is six to seven P.M., the informal session in the senior center with council guests and staff, opening remarks by Mayor Voss in the council chambers. After that, then updates by elected officials. And then followed that by general question and answer sessions in council chamber and adjournments. Our state and county elected officials have been invited to the November sixteenth meeting. Mrs. Brasshead has responded she will attend. We haven't heard anything from the others. And council staff will also be available after the meeting in council chambers to answer any questions or follow up on any comments or discussions with residents at that time. So I would like an approval if this is your desire for this agenda format, and this is where we will proceed with the Town Hall Meeting come Wednesday nights.
I'll make a motion to approve the November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two Town Hall Meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. So staff report. Jack?
Thank you, Steve. I'd just like to make a few brief comments on Mrs. Murphy's earlier presentations. And the city has done everything they can to accommodate meetings with Miss Murphy on three different occasions. We've reached out to her and told her that we want to resolve this as much as she does. This could be, this is not a complicated matter, and it could be easily fixed. But we're waiting on her, and we haven't really gotten any response. So unless there's any objection from council, we will proceed with the issuance of citations tomorrow on this matter. And I'm just awaiting direction. I know we discussed this at a meeting previous, and we were given this, but I just want to make sure that's the direction we want to go.
So what, remind us what deadline was missed?
The first deadline was October thirty-first. The second deadline was November the eighth.
And that was for the, the septic inspection compliance?
That, yeah, and the septic inspection and start getting down, just at least nothing else working out of plan, start to get a permit for the work done without a permit. And Miss Murphy claims there was no work done without a permit, but we.
Believe otherwise.
Have evidence otherwise. But anyway, we've been very accommodating to Mrs. Murphy, and we'd still like to work something out with her, but it doesn't appear that that's going to happen.
But didn't she put in a request for a permit for something?
She did, but as she was stated in a letter back in September, the first thing she had to do was get her septic compliance report done, and she hasn't done that. Although we did receive by email that there was a septic, partial septic compliance inspection, but that wasn't exactly what, what we required. This was just something where the installer comes and just looks at the tank. The inspection report actually checks to make sure it's compliant with all the imp. checks to make sure it's compliant with all M P C A regulations. And this is done because this is a D and R requirement, it's in the Shoreland Overlay District. But again, I'd still like to stress that, you know, we would like to work with Mrs. Murphy and get this resolved as soon as possible, it's better for all parties.
And when was she notified that that wasn't good enough, that septic compliant, that septic inspection that she had?
We just got it tonight. It was emailed tonight.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Do you have an estimate of how much in legal costs the city's incurred in the course of this one case? I know there's a number of cases, but just to rub, I mean, well, pretty tight estimate, actually.
I don't really say, but it's, 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 it's in, it's well, it's in the thousands of dollars. And whether that's two or five, I can't tell you, but it's, it's been fairly expensive.
This matter's been going on since twenty fifteen.
Yeah, yeah, a long time. Um, something occurred to me as I was looking over this stuff, getting ready for the meeting. You guys are familiar with a special master. They supervise and resolve complex, ongoing things like this, much more complex in most cases. But I happen to live across the street and over from a retired Minnesota appeals court judge, who's retired, and has time to do things. And I'm just wondering if at some point, his name is Randy Peterson, he's very well regarded, appointed by Rudy Purpich, for those who care about the politics of the situation, so, but he's just a very highly regarded guy. And I just wonder if he might be willing, possibly even gratis, you know? I don't think he's practicing law anymore. But just to look at the whole matter, and just, that's what a special master does, is just bring together all these loose ends and clarify each one of them, and tie it off, and form a clear picture of the situation, see, you know, where the responsibility for things not being resolved lies, and what needs to happen moving forward. But if you would like, I could at least broach the subject with Judge Peterson. I mean, if it's not working at any conflict with anybody else's plans.
We, we've gone through so many avenues. I don't think we've done mediation on this case.
No, we haven't, and, and to be uh, clear, too, that's, it's not just the, the city that's incurring uh, the legal costs in, in prosecuting a case or anything like that. The city was sued um, by Miss Murphy, and we were defending a lawsuit. So some of those legal costs come in just defending uh, against a lawsuit, and in fact, I would, I would venture that the majority of the cost incurred from a civil perspective were in defending that lawsuit. The city pays a flat fee uh, for any prosecution services any month, no matter how many cases there are. So we haven't uh, the city hasn't been charged more or less uh, based on any prosecution that's occurred, and, and that occurred back in, I believe, uh, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and was ultimately dismissed. But um, with regard to legal fees just incurred in the last uh, year or two, most of them were incurred in defending against the lawsuit brought by Miss Murphy, so.
You're the only lawyer here that I'm, I'm aware of. Well, you know who I'm talking about.
I do know who you're talking about, yes, sir.
What would, what would be your thoughts on the matter? Wait until any litigation is resolved, or what?
Well, there, there is no litigation right now. I mean.
Oh, I thought you said, I thought you just said there was.
That was dismissed. Uh, that was, her, uh, Miss Murphy's suit against the city was dismissed. Uh, there has been threatened litigation against the city, but nothing's come of it. You know, as, as far as uh, you know, mediating a, a resolution in this, um, I, I will say, I think the city's been uh, tried to be as accommodating as possible in this. We've um, Jack has provided two letters to Miss Murphy that spell out in great detail. Rather modest ask that the city has, basically, that she applies for the permits that she didn't get, um, paid a perfect.
I have no reason to doubt what you're saying, but what I notice is these things going on for years. Okay, like there's nothing else to do except let things continue forever. I have one of the people on the bad list who's got the city's attention, lives about a hundred yards from me. And I just happened to see him out there getting his mail the other day, and let him know that I got on the city council. And he told me that it's been going on for over ten years. So, I mean, it's like, how do we resolve stuff, is what I'm thinking is, we certainly have plenty to think of without things getting carried forward ten, fifteen years.
Certainly, and we, and we can be as aggressive as the council would like in, in code enforcement.
I mean, just what really works in getting, getting resolution in these situations?
Well, fundamentally, these are policy decisions. If, if the city wants aggressive code enforcement, the city will get aggressive code enforcement. Court cases do take time, they don't take ten years.
Yeah.
Uh, but they do take time, but uh, some of it is determining how, how aggressive uh, the city wants to be about the enforcement of its ordinances. And I, I think that's um, a bit of an open question.
Thank you.
And one, one other thing I wanted to say with regard to the warrant application, all that information has been provided. All of that has been provided, and it was provided on July twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh to Miss Murphy's attorney. So any statement that those documents haven't been provided is not accurate. It was at the very least provided to Miss Murphy's attorney uh, at his request.
Are you satisfied that that warrant was valid?
Yes.
Chris, could you just speak very briefly to the claims about the falsifications in the affidavit?
I really don't know what the accusation is with the falsification of the affidavit. The affidavit, um, as, as far as I can tell, makes certain statements that Nick Schmitz noticed violations on the property, and the violations had never been addressed. Uh, I, I, I don't know what the specific false statements are. I take uh, your point, Administrator Davis, that it might be arguing over semantics. Uh, when somebody says inspect, inspect can simply be standing on the street, looking at a property, it doesn't mean you went into the house and did a thorough inspection, and some of the issues identified related to a um, accessory building. So I, I, I don't know what the specific allegations uh, that are alleged to be inaccurate are. Uh, I re, I repeat what I said uh, at the last meeting, you know, we, we work with Mr. Sch, Schmitz on, on filing this application. Uh, I see no evidence that anything in the application was false, and it was reviewed by an Anoka County judge, and signed by an Anoka County judge, and that warrant was issued. The inspection occurred, and the inspection identified uh, areas in which work was done without permits. And all the city has requested in this is that uh, Miss Murphy get the appropriate permits and inspections done for the work that she got done without a permit. Everybody that does work in the city gets building permits. Uh, Miss Murphy should be no upset, objection to that, and, and that's why this rather modest request has been made.
So, well, what I noticed on that affidavit is, first, they used the word renters, and she hasn't had a renter in there since two thousand and fifteen. My other thing is how he, and this is what um, was brought to my attention, not from Miss Murphy, but from somebody else, um, that he claims there was no, but never been an inspection since two thousand and ten, and then it says it was inspected in July of two thousand and seventeen, but there's no inspection record of July of two thousand and seventeen. I think I have the month and year right, right? So those are the concerns that I'm aware of.
And uh.
Are those semantics? Is that what you're referring to, a semantics?
Well, I, I, I believe the point that Jack made about if there's a disagreement over the use of the word inspection, that's a disagreement over a word, not what did or didn't occur. Uh, it's my understanding that there are photographs that identify the property uh, in two thousand and fifteen, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and show the ongoing work that was occurring at the property when there was that inspection. Uh, and then finally, I'd like to say, it's, you know, it's a very serious allegation to accuse the city building inspector of, of intentionally filing a false document at the court. I think we should be rather circumspect uh, when doing that. Uh, you know, this is a serious allegation uh, against uh, Mr. Schmidt, and it should not be made lightly.
I agree.
And I believe you covered the term renter at the last meeting?
Uh, yes, I would, yeah, tenant, correct.
But she hasn't had one in there since two thousand and fifteen, and so this is all new stuff.
Well, there's no allegation in the affidavit or that the city's ever asserted that there, she's currently renting the property. That's not an allegation that's been made.
Well, that's what it sounded like to me when I looked at the affidavit.
No, that's just where this issue was brought into the city's purview of renter or tenant or the individual staying there called the city to make a complaint. And that's what brought it into the attention of Mr. Schmitz. He went out, he reviewed, inspected, and brought this information back.
So, Jack, can you, so the next step is you're going to, your plan to do a citation? Is that what you said?
That would be our next step.
And what does that entail?
That would just be citing her for work without permits.
So it's an open case, then? It's like an open file?
Well, we, we, we'd give her a citation, and there'd be X number of days to comply with it, and upon that point, there'd be a reinspection, and if there was no compliance, there would be a second citation. That process would follow until a third citation. If there weren't, it would be turned over to the prosecutor to take back to court. Uh, what we've discussed is on a lot of these court cases, and Mr. Lewis had a good point, and I know the case he's talking about in particular is instead of fines, that we're going to request that probation be the penalty given by the court, because that contains requirements that you must come in compliance to get off the probation. And if you don't, then there's other serious consequences beyond that. So uh, that would be the process we would follow unless council has direction otherwise.
And is there any other option?
The, the option would be to have Miss Murphy come in here as soon as possible and sit down with us and try to work out a resolution and a plan of this. As I say, it's, it's really not a complicated case. There was work done without permits, Miss Murphy denies that, but we have photographic evidence that there was. All we're asking her to do is get the permits and provide inspection reports by those people that are licensed and certified to do so, that the work was completed, the code, and I think this council, we'd present this to this council with the recommendation that'd be approved. It's, it's, that's, that's as simple as it is.
One question a special master would ask is, the evidence that we have, was it legally obtained?
It was. We were requested to come into the facility because of the renter tenant, however it's classified, because there were unsafe conditions there, there were small children living there, there were electrical problems, plumbing problems.
And it was verified that they were actually renting there, they weren't some disaffected person who just had a grudge against Gail or something, who didn't even live there. They were there.
They, they were living there, that's correct.
Okay, all right. That happens, too. People make trouble for each other, you know?
Okay. Anything else? Okay, anything else, Jack?
That's all I have.
Okay. Council reports. Suzanne?
Okay, um, one thing I wanna say is, even though I'm leaving here, the seniors would like a liaison. So I thought you guys might wanna think about that. I'd like to bring up to the council and get your approval. I know it's short notice, but um, for this town hall meeting, I'd like to post on all the community pages about uh, to include a food drive for nays, and I'm wondering if anybody has a problem with that.
I think we do, it's something you're gonna, you're gonna head up?
Yeah, and, and I think it might get more people here, too, because I think people aren't even talking about it.
Okay.
All right, with that, um, I attended a, Anoka County Blaine Airport Advisory Commission meeting. And I don't know if our residents know that there is a Young Eagle Intro Flight Program, and they can, little children can get involved where they can go um, learn all about planes, and they take them up in a plane, and it's really, the kids love it. So I know some scouts might do it for honor badges and stuff, but um, it's, they just have to go onto the website and apply, and I'm sure they'd be approved. Um, and I did get a complaint or two, or not really a complaint, a comments about flight paths and stuff. And there's a website, you can go to mapnomes.com and do flight tractor, trackers, and you can actually click on that little airplane there, and it tells you all about it. The city should start getting invitations to, and um, newsletters to disseminate on the website and stuff of all the happenings down there. Let's see what else. And then, of course, if the city staff ever wanted to go for a tour, you can always schedule that. And then we just kinda talked about what um, the red, the members and oh my gosh, I lost my, the word. The members and the attendees want out of the Anoka County Blaine Airport Advisory Commission. And I guess that is all I've got. Thank you.
Good. Tim?
Um, I attended both watershed meetings last week. The Upper Rum, we uh, we went through the final projects for, for this little past year. The work they did on the, the Rum River and Lake George. The Sunrise, we got, the board got an update on the, on the progress of the new G A P A that we're trying to write in our financial formula, which is still an ongoing battle. Jack and I have a couple meetings in December to try to hopefully get this ironed out. Uh, we had a booster day meeting last week. We've got the ball rolling for, for this next year. We're still looking for volunteers. You don't have to come to the meetings if you want, but we need somebody on the day of booster days, so if you're interested, it's in January of next year, our next meeting. And lastly, today, the fire department had online training. It was protecting evidence. That's all I've got.
Okay, right.
Ten, two meetings. Uh, first one's the North Trunk Highway sixty-five corridor coalition. And there wasn't much to it, but there was some update on the Blaine project down there. They had a big event to invite out, call it, important people and people of influence in the state in order to educate and show them what the issues are on the highway as to why these projects are needed. Uh, they are working towards funding. Uh, currently, they have thirty million funded of a projected one hundred and sixty million total that they figure is needed. Uh, that's where this letter and that uh, grant comes into play, is to try to help fund that. And currently, they are working on environment, environmental aspects and the overall design. So right now, there isn't anything to show, but they are working on it. And in two thousand and twenty-four, there will be a sixth, uh, an overlay on Highway sixty-five going from Highway ten all the way up into East Bethel at two fourteenth, is it? Right around that area, currently where the portion just south of two twenty-first here goes from concrete to asphalt. That's approximately where, where that overlay would end.
And that's an asphalt overlay?
Yes.
Well, it's encouraging that they haven't bumped this project in like a year or two, because as they, this is supposed to be twenty twenty was the first time, so. So that's good.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then I attended the planning and zoning meeting of uh, October twenty-fifth. Seems like so long ago now, but uh, uh, two items were on it, two public hearings. One was a concept plan for Hinn Pines Residential Development, a small acreage development. A couple residents uh, got up to talk about it. They're mostly concerned about where the entrances are, and what headlights, et cetera, because they are neighbors or surrounding property owners. They had uh, some questions about it. Uh, the second public hearing was for the preliminary plat, for the. Uh, the second public hearing was for the preliminary plat, for the planned unit development, Elvige, second edition. Public, public hearing was held, and no one was there to ask questions, so to speak. And that's my report.
Okay. Kevin?
What?
Do you have anything, do you have anything to say?
I'll just thank you for letting me participate and look forward to working with you.
Well, we did let you. You earned your spot there, so. Welcome, welcome to council.
Thank you.
Only two things I have with the snow. Uh, it was, it was interesting to see the plows out so early today. It was nice to see the plows out. I, I did get a message that maybe they missed a cul-de-sac or two, but I assume they'll pick that up next time, so. And then also, it's getting that time of year for those who enjoy fishing on Coon Lake, especially when there's razor thin ice. Uh, I'm sure that'll be happening in the next two weeks with the weather we have. So just, uh, just remember you fall through, then our rescue folks have to come and, and put their, put their lives out there. So just be careful, be smart, so.
Please don't fall through.
I'm not, I said that one year and it happened the next day, so I'm not saying it anymore. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion made second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. I mean adjourn. Thank you, everyone.